Good morning to the September 10th Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting. Those that are able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on our agenda is the agenda review. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Get a motion in a second. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. Next, I would ask that we recess this meeting so we can do the economic development meeting. So I'd ask for a motion in a second to recess our board meeting.
So moved.
Second. Get a motion in a second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The board meeting is recessed and we will now call to order the meeting of the Economic Development Authority. The first item is to review the agenda. Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda either.
Move the approval?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. The next item, number three on the agenda, is the minutes of August 27th. What is your pleasure with those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Get a motion in a second to approve. Discussion on the minutes. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The minutes are approved as printed. At this time, we'll have a public hearing on the 2025 proposed Public Housing Agency Annual Plan. This hearing provides an opportunity for citizens to submit comments and recommendations on the proposed plan in the public setting. I ask Nancy, who was already here, to come forward, introduce herself for the record and give us an update. Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Nancy.
I'm Nancy Volklman, and I work with the EDA on our public housing and our Section 8 programs. As part of the hearing today, we do have, we did have meetings and had public comments. So I did receive some comments that I wanted to share with you, and our responses are all attached with that as well. The annual agency plan really is a comprehensive guide of the EDA's policies, programs, and operations that meet our local housing needs and the goals that we set for our agency. It follows strategic planning for the community. It strengthens ties to our community service agencies. It addresses fair housing, and it uses a number of different tools as we administer the program. And so we've listed some of those tools that you see on an annual basis that we bring forward to you. Today, we'll be talking more about the payment standards. And then every March, we do the utility allowance schedules that help us determine payments for families. We have our administrative plan for the voucher program and our admissions and continued occupancy plan for public housing that we review on an annual basis. We utilize special vouchers for project-based vouchers into apartment complexes to leverage more affordable housing in our community. We provide self-sufficiency to empower economic self-sufficiency for families and then hopefully lead them into homeownership. We have mainstream vouchers for non-elderly disabled. We have DASH vouchers for veterans. Foster youth to independence vouchers for youth coming out of the foster care system to prevent homelessness. And then we do have emergency vouchers and stability vouchers that further support preventing homelessness in our community. We utilize preferences, and then we do have a formula that we use for receiving capital funds from the federal government to maintain and replace our public housing units. So the plan really does identify things that we've changed since last year. We did provide you with our capital fund program for 2024, which shows what we're doing for maintaining and modernizing units. And this year, we're looking at modernizing approximately seven units. And our annual plan does provide roughly $230,000 on an annual basis to make improvements to our units. So that's listed there for you as well. We are in the process of converting our public housing to a project-based voucher, and so we're kind of in the process with that. If you remember back in January, we did apply for half of our units to go through a Section 18. That's still in the process with HUD. It should be done fairly soon here, and then we'd have about a four-month time period where we finalize that with HUD. And then the remaining units are going to go through a RAD conversion with HUD, and that's just undertaking that process right now. We hope to get all of that information submitted in November, and so we should see all of the units transitioning next year into more of a project-based type of assistance where we can control then the replacement reserves rather than going through HUD to do some of that work. In addition, this year, we did work with HUD. HUD's been working for many years on developing a Housing Opportunities Through Modernization Act, which they call HATMA. And so they're getting into the final stages of that, and they haven't actually initiated the changes. We're hoping to see that sometime in 2025. But they do want us to be prepared and have our administrative plans all established with some of those changes. So you'll see that we did provide a lot of information on that. And actually with that, you'll note that what they're trying to do is really stabilize tenants' rents. So they're not going to have us do as many interim adjustments as we would have with rent changes, but kind of streamline it and do it on an annual basis. It also is a staff take-saving measure as well, so it allows us to do more vouchers as we move through that. But really, it's trying to streamline some of their rents, give them a break, and make them more successful going forward. They did make some changes, I know, like for elderly disabled households, they got a $400 a year deduction. They actually finally changed that the first time in probably forever over the 30 years that I've been working on the program. They're moving it up to $520, so making some of those type of streamlined changes. The other thing they're doing is when we inspect units, they was always under the housing quality standards. They've got a new system called Inspire that they're changing our inspection protocol to. A lot of it still is the same. We still have building code requirements and that type of thing. But it's just ensuring how we inspect to make sure that units are maintained and in good condition for the families that the government is subsidizing. And then the plan also goes through and highlights some of the accomplishments and initiatives that we've been working on this past year. And every year, we try to stay in the same areas, addressing certain areas, because that's really our mission. So we're really working to address homelessness, administering our housing choice voucher in our public housing programs, promoting economic self-sufficiency, promoting homeownership, and leveraging more affordable units in our communities. So you can see, if you do review this plan, we have increased our services over the last five years. We're 33% of the vouchers that we give out are to homeless populations in our community. So we've really made great strides in doing that. We've leveraged additional housing stability and navigation administrative services so we can give more time to families to help them transition into housing. We've managed our voucher program with high standard rating, a high performer rating from HUD, and our inspection protocols for public housing are at 98%. So we're pleased that we're able to continue to maintain that. We've been serving about 47 families on self-sufficiency, working to get that job that will make them stable enough where they won't need our program anymore, and even having them look into homeownership. So about a handful of our families are transitioning to that point. I know the last couple of years, homeownership has been slow and interest rates have been going up, but we're seeing a big difference this year. We're seeing a lot more interest. I know last year, for Minnesota Cities Participation Program with the state of Minnesota, we only did 26 homes. And already, as of August, yesterday, we got a notice saying we've seen 36 families purchase a home under that program. So we're well in line to getting back to that goal of trying to stay at 50 homes per year with that funding. So it's a good sign that we're seeing some movement on homeownership as well. And then this past year, we started working on leveraging dollars for the Community Land Trust here in Mankato, so expanding it into this area. And then last month, you did work on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and leveraging those state dollars from the statewide Affordable Aid to begin that. And then we'll be looking, I know, in the next few months here, into how we can expand the Housing Trust Fund in our area. The plan also does go through partnerships that we have that make us successful in our community in addressing affordable housing. So we did list out a lot of the different providers. It's not a complete listing, but definitely some of those that we work on a regular basis with are Ark of Minnesota, the City of Mankato, Connection Shelter Habitat for Humanity, the School District, Lutheran Social Services, Minnesota Valley Action Council, Partners for Housing, the River Valley COC, Salvation Army, the Southern Minnesota Regional Legal Services, and the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. And so with that partnership, we've been able to do a lot to improve our homeless response system. We actually do bi-weekly case conferencing. We're actually talking about each individual homeless person that we've been made aware of in our community and see how we're moving them forward in that process. We've been working on the Supportive Housing and Shelter Project. Funding has gone in for the Supportive Housing, and now we're starting to look at how we can find the capital we need to do the shelter piece of that project. And then over the last year and a half, we've had a street outreach team that's been working and navigating those who are homeless. So they're actually going out on the streets, finding people who are homeless and making sure that they're aware of different resources to try to help them become successful in finding homes. We've expanded our services to youth. We have the Foster Youth to Independence vouchers that we received from HUD, but then the state of Minnesota has also provided the local homeless prevention aid for youth, and so we're working with that to make sure that we don't have homeless youth in our community. And then another big piece was creating awareness and landlord engagement. So we've been doing more of that, talking to different groups about the whole spectrum of housing that we have in our community and how we're trying to meet some of those things. So the plan itself was posted for public comment. We did receive the resident advisory notes, which I provided for you, and we're asking you to approve by resolution the annual Public Housing Agency Plan and the five-year plan as presented.
Okay, thank you for that overview. At this time, we'll open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allowed to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on the annual Is there anyone wishing to make comments? I will ask for the third and final time, is there anyone who would like to make comments on the agency annual plan? Seeing and hearing none, I will bring the item back before the board for their questions and consideration of the plan.
I have no questions. Very good report, Nancy. Thank you.
Very thorough, as always.
And at this time, it would be appropriate for a motion in a second to approve the agency annual plan.
I'll move the agency annual plan.
Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The annual plan is approved. Then we go to number five on the agenda. Tab number three is the payment schedule. Would you review that, please, Nancy?
As you're aware, the federal program requires a lot of federal regulations and rules we have to follow. This is one time where we have some flexibility in determining our local response to some of the regulations. And so HUD does provide us on an annual basis fair market rents, which are established at 40% of the area market rents in our community. And we're able to take that information, and we can set our payment standards. The payment standards are the gross rents for rent in these that tenants pay to be eligible under the program. And we can set those standards anywhere between 90 and 110% of the fair market rents established by HUD. And we have to go through certain procedures to determine where we want to set some of them. So some of the things that we do look at when we review them is, do we have enough funds to be able to increase our payment standards to provide more subsidies to families? Right now, we continue to be able to do that. We also look at, the biggest piece is that rent burdeness of families. So even though we're providing tenants and families this rent, are they still rent burdened? Are they still paying more than 30% of their income? And if they are, we try to set the standards at a level so that we take away that rent burdeness from them. So we want to ensure that everybody on the program is within that 30%. And you might think, well, if you're putting them on the program, how come they're not within the 30%? We do when we start them on the program. And then annually, the landlords can raise those rents, and that can take a tenant's rent over that affordability level. So every year, we want to make sure if that happens, that we have an adjustment factor for that. And so currently, we did set the standards anywhere between 102 and 108%, just so that we could regulate that. I think we had about 90 families that were rent burdened this year, and we were able to bring it down to about 30 with these change in standards. We do have the flexibility to go up to 110, but we want to make sure we're working within our market, and so just making sure that everyone is within that 30% threshold. That still kept us between the 102 and the 108. We try not to get to the 110 because if next year HUD reduces the standards, then we'd have to reduce our subsidies, and we don't want to put families in that situation. So we leave a little flex room in there. So we try to stay at 8 or 9, 7 to 8% before we set those. So we've listed them here for you. We also look at the quality of the units, make sure that the families are leasing in units that meet our standards, are not a challenge to find in our community. We look at the rent changes. So every year, landlords have that opportunity to raise rents, and we watch that. A healthy rent increase is usually between a 3 to 5%. This year, we were seeing them all over the board from between 5% and 17%. Still, we're trying to come out of that pandemic. So we're still seeing a lot of flexibility in there. So that's just something we continue to watch, showing a need that we need to increase some of these standards because tenants are seeing a huge increase in some cases. And then we look at the availability of units and make sure that we have an adequate supply in our community. We still struggle right now with one bedrooms in our community. And then the last thing that we look at is lease-up time and how long it takes for families to successfully find housing. And we usually give them, we can give them anywhere from 30 days to 120 days to find housing. We're seeing them finding housing between two and three months, so that's a really good time period, well within our voucher time limit. So we felt really comfortable with the standards that we're presenting for you today to consider. And these standards will go into effect once approved on December 1st. Another piece of information we wanted to also share with you is the flat rents for public housing. We don't traditionally bring this to you. These are approved by HUD, and they use the fair market rents as well when they establish these. And the flat rents for public housing, which is the maximum rent that we can collect in those units, is usually set around 80% of the fair market rents. We have them right now set about 81 to 83. We can set them anywhere between 80 and 100%. So you can see, public housing has a considerably lower rent allowance that we can provide than the Section 8 program does. So we wanted to note that for you because as we do that RAD conversion, all of our public housing will go in line with the voucher program, and we'll be looking at, able to, the ability to collect rents more in line with the voucher program at that 100 to 108%. So we'll see more revenues to ensure that we can stably maintain those units. So right now, we're asking the board to approve these payment standards effective December 1st and ask you approve that by resolution.
Any clarifying questions on the payment schedule?
Just a clerical question, I think. Effective 12/124, or should that be 25?
Actually, we're making, we make it December of this year. So HUD traditionally gives us the fair market rents, like in August or September. So, and then we have like 60 days to put those into effect. So we're putting it into effect for December 1st of 24, and it'll go through the next year. So it's not our calendar year.
Just in C25. I was a little confused. Thank you.
Yes.
Other clarifying questions? If not, it'd be appropriate for a motion in a second to accept the Section 8 Housing Choice Payment Schedule recommendation.
We'll do approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The Section 8 Housing Choice Payment Schedule is approved. On our approved agenda, the next item, that completes the items, the next item would be to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. This meeting is adjourned. We will call back to order the Blue Earth County Board meeting. We are at number four, which is tab number two, and the first item on that is review the agenda. Mr. Meyer, please.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, on the advice of council staff, have prepared a memo recommending continuance of this hearing to October 22nd. And so I'm asking for revision to the agenda to add this memo. This will be the next item for the board's consideration if you approve this revised agenda.
Okay, so we'll have an item, kind of a 2A after that. Any questions on the agenda review? Are we ready to approve the agenda? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The agenda is approved as amended. So we will go to the added item, the amended item. Ryan, please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ryan Henneker, County Drainage Systems Coordinator with our Property and Environmental Resources Department. Memo for the day, Blue Earth County Ditch 78 watershed is approximately 9,200 acres in size and is located in Garden City and Vernon Center Townships. A petition to outlet additional acres into CD 78 was received on February 27th, 2024. On April 23rd, 2024, the Drainage Authority appointed Engineer Charles J. Brando of ISG to review the petition. The Drainage Authority also appointed viewer Mark Behrens to make a report with recommendation for an outlet fee and benefits for the property. The reports have been received, and we are now ready to hold a hearing on the petition. A public hearing for the proposed petition, including a review of the viewers and engineers' reports, is required. On August 13th of 2024, by assigned findings and order, the Drainage Authority set a final hearing date of September 10th of 2024. A revised version of the petition was received on August 27th, 2024, from petitioner's attorney due to an error on the original page of the petition. Action requested today in light of the error, I would ask the Drainage Authority to make a motion for continuation. In order to give adequate time to properly renotice for the proposed petition outlet additional lands into County Ditch 78, I would ask that this final hearing be continued to a time date certain, being October 22nd, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. That is all I have. Mr. Chair.
All right, you've heard the explanation and the recommendation from staff.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. I think any time, it's always wise to follow your legal counsel's advice.
Agreed.
Are we ready to vote? And we're voting on the motion to do it date certain to October 22nd. Renotising will need to be done. Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. This hearing will be continued to October 22nd. So that concludes, that concludes this agenda. The next item will be item number five.
Thank you, Ryan.
The public hearing, thank you, Ryan. Concludes the public hearing on County Ditch 78. We will go to tab number, item number five, Information Technology. Ms. Harvey, would you please join us and introduce yourself for the record?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Harvey, IT Director. We went out for a fiber optic build, RFP, on July 1st of 2024. We were, it's a continuation to our existing route intersection of County Road 8 and Stadium Road in the city of Mankato, and follows County Road 8 right away south for 2.45 miles, and then west on County Road 90 for one mile to the future public worksite. We worked with Finley Engineering to develop this RFP, and they did provide us with an opinion of cost that came in at $215,505.12. The bids were open July 31st, 2024, with only a single bid received from Consolidated Communications, which came in at $364,000, which is 70% over the estimate. So it is my recommendation to reject the sole bid from Consolidated Communications for $364,000 and work with Finley Engineering to put out another RFP. We will revise that RFP to include options for alternative routes, future locates, and maintenance.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Discussion. So do you expect it to change?
We're hoping with giving them the ability to propose an alternative route, that this will change the numbers.
And why would that make it change?
Because they already have, they wanted to propose an alternative route, but because of the way we had written the original RFP, it didn't give them the opportunity. So we would have to decline this first one for them to entertain a new route. We didn't give them the option to do the alternate route the first time.
You're reading, this is a problem across the state of Minnesota. La Sura County has an issue. Other counties have issues with the same type of thing. And that's, I mean, I completely agree. I'm just trying to get the, to my head as to why, you know, do you actually feel somebody else besides Consolidated is going to bid on this?
Well, we're hopeful that we'll get additional options with, given the ability to not do the future locates, because in the original RFP, we had built in 10 years' worth of maintenance and future locates. And so we're removing that language to give more option to have contractors versus just ISPs be able to build it out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Other discussion?
You had other people that were interested, from my understanding.
We did on our contractors meeting. There were several folks that were on that call.
That just makes sense that you would reopen this thing. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Other discussion? Are we ready to vote on the recommendation to reject the bid and work with Finley Engineer to put another RFP together? Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. It is approved. Next, we have tab number four, Security Policy Update, please.
Yes. So each year, we do a BCA. That's the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension Audit at Blue Earth County. This year, the audit went from 10 pages to 22 pages long. The BCA has also implemented security standards that we must include in the policies to comply with the Criminal Justice Data Communications Network Security Policy. The policies include access control, awareness and training, contingency planning, audit and accountability, planning, media protection, risk assessment, identification and authentication, systems and communications protection, system and information integrity, maintenance, physical and environmental protection policy, and an incident response. These policies have been carefully reviewed by the Blue Earth County Security Administrator, Information Technology Director, and County Administration. The BCA is mandating that these policies go into effect October 1st. Due to the sensitive nature of these documents, they have not been included in the board packet. I do have hard copies available if you would like to review them. Approval of these policies will ensure compliance with the BCA standards and assist in passing the annual audit. Approval of these policies is mandatory for the staff to access the CJDN network and meeting the October 1st, 2024 deadline. It is my recommendation that the board approve these policies.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Get a motion in a second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Those policies are approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're now to agenda item. We're now to agenda item number six, tab number five, Public Works. Mr. Tilges, would you join us, please?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ryan.
Ryan Tilges, Blue Earth County Engineer. We're going to present the first action item for consideration today is bids for State Project Number Zero Zero Seven, Six Twenty-Nine dash Zero Zero Seven. This is for replacement of the bridge on County State Highway Number Twenty-nine. The bid, bid summary was provided in the board packet. I'll be handing out copies of the bid abstract with the detailed breakdown of all of the unit item prices under the contract. The engineer's estimate was one million four hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars, twenty-five cents. The low bid was Minowa Construction at one million two hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars, twenty cents, or eight point nine-three under the estimate. Structural Specialties was second, and Icon Constructors was third. So good bids on the project, good working experience with Minowa Construction, done several bridges for the county. I would recommend award of the bid to Minowa Construction Incorporated.
I'll move approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The bid is awarded to Minowa Construction.
All right. Some project updates. County State Highway Thirteen from US One Sixty-nine to County State Highway One was began in twenty-twenty-three. Gravel placement is wrapping up this week. Pavement is set to begin either Friday or Saturday. Contractor anticipates about seven days of paving to complete the pavement on the project. It'll be Yuland Brothers out of Albert Lee. Gravel shouldering, topsoil and turf establishment, striping, final cleanup will follow the paving work. So project's moving along. Cassat Eleven from the West County Line to Cassat Six is, entire project is paved. They're working on shouldering, topsoil and turf establishment, striping, final cleanup, et cetera, will also follow out there. So we're in good shapes on those large reconstruction projects out in the rural parts of the county. Victory Drive, County State Highway Eighty-two, from south of Hoffman Road to Fair Street. Dirt Merchant, Inc. hopes to have the road open at the end of the day tomorrow.
Wow.
Depending on subcontractors wrapping up their work. So that's best-case scenario, worst-case scenario is a day or two later, but it seems like things are on schedule and the weather's been supportive, so.
Good for you guys.
We're hopeful that it'll be reopened tomorrow afternoon.
No, they already put some striping on, on the sides of, you know, the shoulders and stuff.
Yep, yep.
So when you can start seeing paint coming down.
You know, you're getting close, yes. It was on the KUIC. For some reason, there were some postings on the city website that they had picked up on, so that was, sorry that made it to the media the day before it got to you guys, but they picked up on...
No, it's good. It's all good.
Why was it going in the right direction?
Yeah. There we are. Ten and Seventy-two in Vernon Center work is substantially complete on the county roads, except for the Batumis wearing course that I believe we'll put on next year. The twenty-twenty-four overlays, crews are working on Cassat Thirty-eight, and then we'll move on to Sixteen later this week. Three, Twenty-eight, Eighty-six, County Roads One Twenty and One Eighty-four will be completed a later date. The Twenty-nine Bridge Replacement that was just awarded, once the contracts are approved, we'll discuss the project's schedule with the contractor. We tentatively plan to begin work in the spring of twenty-twenty-five, unless they can provide us with an acceptable, acceptable alternative schedule that would include a continuation of work if they choose to pursue it throughout the winter. The One Forty-six Bridge Replacement Project deck will be poured this week. We anticipate opening the road in the coming month. That one moving right along out there again in the rural parts of the county. One Thirty-nine, the bridge is funded. We need temp easements. We anticipate bidding that later this fall for twenty-twenty-five construction. Cassat Five from Riverfront Drive to Summit Avenue, this is Third Avenue. Preliminary design is focusing now on the city utilities, so getting some direction from the city so that they can complete the design of the city utility replacements within the project. If you remember, that's a major cost factor to the overall project, and that'll be a big schedule driver as well on completion of the project. We anticipate holding an open house meeting later this, probably late October or in November, once we get to a stage where we're comfortable with the information we have, that we can share it with the public and get feedback. Fifteen and Twenty-eight in St. Clair, design work and topographical survey is progressing at preliminary layouts. We anticipate meeting with Bolton and Mink who's doing the design on that and moving into more final design here in the next month. County State Highway Ten from the West Line to Cassat Twenty, final plans are scheduled to be completed by the end of this week. The full plans must be submitted for funding eligibility for the bridge, which would mean fifty percent of the bridge from the remaining revenue, local bridge replacement program. Honestly, I'm surprised that pot has not run out yet. I just got an email. I believe there's maybe fourteen million left. I was told by the folks that manage that program that, as far as looking at the queue of projects that are in design, they think we should still be able to get funding, as long as we get it in soon. So I'm hopeful to get that bridge at least partially funded to its maximum fifty percent The Cassat Forty Slope Repair Project, we're waiting on the state environmental reviews for our project memorandum. Plans will resume in the coming weeks as well, once we wrap up Ten. Cassat Ten from Vernon Center to one mile east, including the bridge replacement. The consultant is Widset Engineering, is working on final design after we determined to effectively follow the existing roadway alignment within reason and bringing it to the, to the highest speed possible, but more likely going to be a forty-five, kind of following those curves on the north end of the project. Fourteen Box Culvert.
How high on that, Ryan?
That is a twenty, twenty-twenty-six project, I believe, Commissioner. I'll have to double-check that, but it's, it's not a next-year project. We're trying to get out ahead of it, get it on the list for bridge funding. Fourteen Box Culvert, project is funded. Anticipate bidding later this fall for twenty-twenty-five. Same thing for the Cassat Twenty-six Box Culvert, and then the One Fifty-six Bridge Replacement Project as well. So those three will all be completed next year, but are funded. So Blue Earth County's done tremendously well with this latest round of local bridge replacement program funding. I forget that I can come up with the total next month, but I believe I, when I checked it, it was almost four million dollars. It was, it was dramatic amount of money that we've been receiving, and that's because we've been very active on getting bridges in our hopper and in queue for design and on the waiting list. And I think it has twofold impacts. Obviously, financially benefits the county, but it also helps us obtain statewide bridge funding when we lobby for it to show that there is a significant need, and we have to have those projects on the list in waiting to really express that need, and we obviously have had a dramatic bridge replacement need here in Blue Earth County. Main activities, the crews wrapped up seal coating and fog sealing last week, and their site preparation and paving has been completed in advance of the New Lake Crystal Salt Shed. Crews are wrapping up mowing out the southern third of the county, and we'll resume patching, shouldering, ditch cleaning, and driveways this fall, and park staff are beginning reconstruction of the Duck Lake Park Garage. We held a Monarch Butterfly Open House meeting for the conservancy agreement on August twenty-seventh. It was very well-attended. Lots of folks came in and had good discussions. Comments received were generally supportive of the program's concept. I'd say the biggest concern was not being able to mow their yard and keep the weeds down in the ditch in front of their homes. So I think we can make some adjustments within the program for that to not claim those acres and kind of deduct those from the totals. We'll just have to make sure we have adequate acreage. There was maybe one or two spots where people claimed they, they bailed, but in, in other comments we received, we had people said that there's, nobody should be bailing those areas, so it was an interesting conversation. But I think staff did a pretty good job of selecting candidate roads that were not actively used for haying and bailing. I don't, Commissioner, you know, you've talked with lots of folks. Do you have any comments on it, or?
No, I guess, I guess, first of all, I appreciate having adequate staff that attended that open house, and there's nothing more frustrating when you want to come get information or you have questions, basically, and you have to stand in line. So it was nice to have many boards up and multiple maps there to, to get those questions answered. And yeah, the, the questions I get too is, you know, if you got weeds and things like that, can I go in, can I spot mow, and can I mow that one strip of the ditch right next to my crop to keep the weeds out of the crop? And we've talked about maybe not doing a hundred percent of every ditch, so having that option.
Right.
If it becomes necessary.
Right. So we intend to bring that agreement application to the county board for consideration in October and get that, that turned in. With that, the last item that I had then is the Rapidan Dam Update Memorandum that was provided in the board packet. I'll, I'll kind of hit on the high points. I won't go into everything we talked about at every meeting, because obviously these things aggrandise and build up. So with respect to the bridge update, Stonebrook Engineering completed the final structural assessment and recommendation for the bridge, the existing bridge, on August ninth, twenty-twenty-four. You've all been copied with that report, so I won't go into detail on the report, but effectively stating that bridge replacement was recommended as part of that report that was provided to the board. On August fourteenth, we participated in a meeting with Federal Highway Administration, MINDOT, based on our conversations and the potential failure modes of the bridge. FHWA ultimately agreed that the bridge needs to be removed in an emergency contract, which is what we've been subsequently pursuing. Staff have advertised the bridge removal project, placed it online and in the Free Press, to be published on August twenty-third, thirtieth, and September sixth, to open bids on September eighteenth for board consideration on the twenty-fourth. Bids may be delayed if necessary due to any federal highway or MINDOT requirements placed on the contract, but under the emergency, emergency status, we should be able to proceed forward. With that, we also submitted environmental site assessment consultation requests for emergency bridge removal to MINDOT and the bridge removal project on August sixteenth, and then on the nineteenth, I submitted a cultural resources form. These are federal, when you're using federal funding on these types of projects, typically you have to obtain clearances from these groups, but in this circumstance where we're doing it under an emergency authorization, we kind of just have to do it after the fact. So I did submit those as quickly as possible. And again, plans and specifications have been completed. We're dealing with bidder questions now and the opening bids next week. On August eighth, with respect, now, I'm sorry, moving on to dam updates. August eighth, we held a virtual meeting with BAR Engineering and discussed several items listed in the memorandum. August thirteenth, the board work session was held with the Minnesota Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management. August fifteenth, we conducted a week, another weekly meeting with BAR, again, hosting those. If anybody is interested in ever sitting in on those, I can send you the recurring meeting invitation, just weekly updates and progressing forward with data and reports. On August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, we participated in an online virtual meeting with the FERC, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources and the US Army Corps of Engineers. Discussed several items during the meeting, the board consideration that occurred on the August twenty-seventh meeting, the need to pursue different funding sources potentially, and making a decision ultimately between the Army Corps of Engineers Ecosystem Restoration Program and FEMA. We will be meeting with FEMA tomorrow. We've got about a four-hour meeting scheduled with FEMA, so that'll be our initial kickoff meeting, and I'm hoping we can get quite a bit of direction and, and understanding of how this process is going to play out, especially now that the board has made, made its decision. So I'm, I'm hopeful we can save a lot of time and effort in not having our consultant engineers go to the, the expense and the time of coming up with a hypothetical repair plan that, that's going to cost us significant engineering resources and time, and that we could just come up with something. But we're going to have to vet that with FEMA. I don't know that they're going to accept that approach, but we're going to at least take a shot at it. We talked about the Architectural Historian engagement. They, they thought it was going to be helpful to have that done. The FERC did not have any updates regarding the licenser surrender until the county board made a decision at the time. We discussed soil boring needs and stabilization of the West Bank. On August twenty-second, we held our weekly meeting with BAR Engineering again, you know, discussing all of those project elements that we're working on.
Ryan, can I go back?
Yes.
To number four, and the FERC didn't have any updates. A county decision will help the FERC decide how to proceed, just so I'm reading that right. It really is the county decision that we, that's been made.
Correct.
Should help FERC decide quicker.
Yep.
Is that what that kind of means? We don't have any other county decisions that need to be made at this time to help FERC decide.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification, yes. This was as of August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
When the decision had not been made yet.
Okay.
So I was just trying to put this in a chronological order.
Okay, I get, I get it. I get it.
Yep. So we, August twenty-six, I spoke with Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office. I think we've already discussed that conversation in a previous meeting, so I won't belabor it. On August twenty-seventh, we had a virtual meeting with the DNR and BAR Engineering to discuss river channel changes and our options moving forward. Didn't get a lot of direction out of that, but I think there was some commitment from the DNR to work with the county on the solution, especially with dam removal being selected. They are supportive of that approach. On August twenty-ninth, we held a weekly virtual meeting again with BAR, and we're progressing forward with these different reports and the different design elements. One of the things I think I'd point out out of that, we discussed whether an internal dam investigation is needed at this time for dam safety and stability. It was determined that it's not necessary, given the county board decision, and since the FERC has not required it, we don't see benefit of sending folks into the dam to assess stability and safety, incurring the cost, the, the risk of putting people in the dam if not necessary, knowing the decisions we're moving forward with. So until the FERC tells us that we have to do it, I think we're going to try to keep our people and their people out of the dam with confined space entry concerns. On the twenty-ninth, BAR provided a dam spillway stability analysis update memorandum. It calculated the bearing, flotation, and sliding stability factors of safety for comparison with industry guidelines per the county's request to account for the headwater and upstream silt elevation changes. A factor of safety is to say that if a, it's, it's how, what, what factor above and beyond, or what percentage above and beyond, the necessary strength of the necessary stability does the, the structure have. So it's to say if there's a beam that needs to carry ten tons, a factor of safety of two would mean that the beam's capable of carrying twenty tons, just to maybe put it simply. So when I refer to factor of safety, that's what it's talking about. This desktop study began by replacing the stability results found in the twenty-fifteen STID document with modifications applied for the current headwater and silt levels. It was a desktop analysis without field testing and physical testing at the site, so a hypothetical analysis. The calculated factor of safety in overturning and bearing and flotation and sliding in the current condition are all greater than they were in the normal or flood conditions, so meaning with the silt and with the headwater gone off of the dam, it's actually more stable now than it was before. In, in hypothetical condition, good, you know, or condition that it was in back in twenty-fifteen, for that, for that caveat. On August twenty-ninth, I spoke with the FERC. They would like to participate in the FEMA conversation, so I did, really just to assist the county with moving the dam process forward, the dam removal process forward. They will also be conducting an inter-agency investigation of the dam breach, conducted in the coming weeks. It's been subsequently scheduled for September twenty-fourth, so that'll be beginning at the end of this month, and that will involve engineers from the FERC and other federal agencies that'll be reviewing what happened and writing a report. And when I spoke with the FERC, he said this, this is generally viewed as a, as a learning document of, you know, perhaps what could have been done differently and, or, or not, and, and also maybe a word of caution to other agencies in similar situations. So we'll, we'll see how that process goes. On September third, the county board resolution was electronically filed with the FERC. It was accepted by the FERC, and then they subsequently requested additional information within three months. So I'll be working with BAR Engineering to provide that additional information. In addition, since the memorandum was filed or sent to the board, Bolton and Mink was hired for the Architectural Historian Dam Review. They were one of two consultants that proposed on the work. They were the lowest bid, and having local presence seemed to be a more logical approach, and we're able to meet our project timeline and requirements. BAR also provided an interim stabilization options for the West Channel SCARP. It was a draft memorandum. Once we get that to final stage, I'll share that with the county board, so it was just what, what we could do as interim solutions for the, the erosion SCARP on the west abutment. And it is bearing price tag, and the intention was also to discuss that with the FEMA tomorrow and see if any of that is eligible for FEMA funding as an interim solution, because obviously ultimately, I don't think that that has any long-term, aside from just protecting property so we don't lose any more land, and obviously so we don't see any more erosion downstream. I think ultimately, at some point in time too, as we get into design of the dam and get direction from FEMA, you know, we'll have to talk about, do we, do we pursue filling that area back in or returning it to some usable land, and a lot of that obviously is private property and how... usable land? And a lot of that obviously is private property, and how does that work? So there's a lot of questions and unknowns, and we have those on our radar and we'll be working through those. So happy to answer any questions or comments.
So we've seen five pages of updates in less than a month. So number one, got to believe this is taking an incredible amount of your time and
Yes, sir.
and the entire team. So we thank you for that and and keeping this up. You know, I appreciate all the the updates and I appreciate the five pages of making sure, you know, we're doing the right thing in chronological chronological order. When we get asked by Bluewood County residents, what's the update on the bridge and the dam? And we know that they've only got about a three or a four sentence attention span. I will ask you in that three or four sentence, what's what's the update on the bridge and the dam?
You know, an engineer can never break it down.
You got to give us.
No, but we keep giving you time to practice.
Bridge. Studied, determined not that repair was not warranted or feasible or effective, and removal and replacement is necessary, pursuing funding, which has been secured to replace it. So removal will happen this fall or winter, and replacement is moving forward through the federal process, which will take some time, up to two to three years for bridge replacement, we anticipate. With respect to the dam, meeting with FEMA and beyond that, it's we're going to have a lot of questions for FEMA and make a decision determining what's going to be eligible for funding, trying to figure out what the timeline works looks like, and what the environmental and permitting process is going to look like through them.
Thank you.
That was good.
Questions?
I think.
For board members?
I think the questions, Mr. Chair, the questions I'm getting is the timeline. And I've just been telling people, we haven't, we aren't there yet. But I'm hearing you use the word timeline. So maybe in the next couple of months, we'll have some sort of a timeline.
Yeah, I've had a few people ask me as well, Commissioner. And I think with respect to the dam, I've told people, I maybe a year and a half before we get the funding secured, sadly.
Sure.
And and beyond that, then we go into environmental documents process and trying to secure any additional funding. I've been telling people, I I would be surprised if we were doing anything significant with the dam before five years as as a scientific wild guess. I'm hopeful that it'll be faster, but I'm trying to manage expectations as well.
And things will come to fruition as you work through it.
Correct. Yep. There's a lot of unknowns. This is not a chartered process that any of my colleagues have done before. So we're 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 learning as we go.
It'll look good on your resume. You probably just never use it again. It's the problem.
Hopefully.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I just remind you, we received some congressionally-directed spending three years ago, and we're still working on that project. The federal process is a slow one.
Oh, yeah.
I agree with Mr. Tilges that patience is going to be needed here because this is not something where we can just dive in and start putting things back in better condition. We have to work through a process, and it's going to take a while.
So we can't just tear it down and and hope for the payment later?
If, no, I don't. If we were using just local.
Hope is not a strategy.
I'll tell you my saying about hope sometime when I'm not on the camera. But if we were using local or state dollars, there'd be a lot less red tape. But obviously, the price tag is dramatic.
Sure, I get it. Wow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the report, and thank you for all the updates.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Next on our agenda, agenda item number seven is and tab number six is our county attorney update that's provided for us. Megan is here if there's any questions on that. Any questions on that? We will go to item number eight, administration. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for August 27th.
Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carried. The August 27th, 2024 minutes are approved.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The bills are approved.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number nine in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board's consideration today. First, we have filled a property and environmental resources specialist one position out of the landfill. We did then receive a resignation of our fraud investigator in our human services department. We also received a resignation of a correctional officer, a part-time position in the jail. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that part-time correctional officer position. We also filled a full-time correctional officer position. And then we had a decrease in hours for a full-time correctional officer to part-time. In addition to that, we had a resignation of a full-time correctional officer. So the net result of all that movement and change is we've initiated recruitment to fill two full-time correctional officers. Then we had a promotion of a maintenance technician two to a maintenance technician three in our public works department, and have initiated recruitment to fill that maintenance technician two. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on any of those human resources items. All right. Item number 10 in your packet then is a subrecipient agreement between Bluewood County and the Salvation Army. Staff from the Economic Development Authority and the county met with Salvation Army earlier this summer to talk about the summer shelter. We had a preference for a seven-day-a-week summer shelter to be operated by the Salvation Army. Due to staffing concerns, the Salvation Army was unable or unwilling to provide that seven-day-a-week. And so through a negotiation, we ended up at a five-day-a-week program over the summer. We've been working through some of the contract elements. So basically, they're providing a day shelter where individuals can stop in between May 1st and October 31st. So we're well into this period. So this is a retroactive contract. Operation hours are from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It allows people to get some basic services, basic shelter services, respite, personal hygiene needs met, and then there are food and case management services. So bringing forward this agreement for the board's consideration. The overall dollar amount on this particular agreement is $70,000 for the summer of 2024.
I would move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. It is approved.
Item number 11 in your packet then is a an amendment to our construction manager agreement with Kraus Anderson. The original agreement was signed back in 2021. So as the board is aware, we've been working on this public works project for quite some time. Since a number of years have passed since the original agreement was signed, Kraus Anderson came forward requesting some new rates and different provisions in terms of staffing assigned to our project. John Prestash and I worked with Kraus Anderson to review the proposed amendment. John did most of the legwork, given his knowledge base. He was able to reduce the amount of the agreement by a little over $55,000 through negotiations with Kraus Anderson. One of the elements that was considered was the length of the project schedule. The pricing had been set at 60 weeks, but the project schedule originally had it for 67 weeks. We've negotiated with Kraus Anderson to try and get it consistent that the pricing and the schedule both are at 60 weeks. There also are some negotiation around the rates. Obviously, staffing rates and stuff have increased since 2021. So Kraus Anderson really was unwilling to change those rates. But there were some elements related to general liability insurance that resulted in about a $270,000 reduction in cost to the county. So through the work that has been done, primarily again by John Prestash, we are bringing forward this contract, and we're seeing substantial savings from the original proposed amendment.
I'll move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. It is approved.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have a number 12 in your packet. It is a financial status report for August 31st, or about two-thirds of the way through our fiscal year. You'll see our total revenue sit at 77.6 million with expenses at 81.3 million. Again, not unusual to be in a deficit situation at this point in years. We're waiting for those second half taxes. Generally speaking, when you look at the percentages off to the right-hand column, revenues at 61%, the target's 66.7%. Expenses are at 64.1%. So again, both revenue and expenses are running a little bit below the budget targets that we have. But overall, everything seems to be in good shape. On the enterprise fund, you'll see that total revenues are at 34 or 3.4 million against expenses of 3.9 million. Again, we have some large machinery and land improvements that is typical with the landfill. We'll have years where we'll have large expenses in those categories that are offset by years where our revenue will exceed our expenses. The second page then shows our cash balances. Towards the top, you'll see our total available funds at 80.7 million. Our target really is 62.5. Towards the bottom, you'll see our total county funds sit at 137.8 million. Be happy to answer any of your questions that the board might have, but given we have a work session coming up, I'll keep it short today.
Questions for the administrator?
That's good. Strong.
All right. We are at agenda item number nine, Commissioners' reports on committees. And I thought about this on the way in, and to alleviate a lot of stress on at least the current chair, with with your permission, I made an executive decision that I'm just going to start to my right and go around the horn and end with myself at every meeting, if that's okay with everybody, that you know what order you're in, and then I don't have to remember who I think I called on last night. Fair enough? Mr. Brunder, will you start us on this new experiment?
I would be happy to, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, you and I both met with some staff on some planning and zoning issues. So we try to do that every other month to keep up to date with what's going on out in the rural area. Had our employee appreciation or employee years of service, I guess, would be a better description of what happened. I thought that was a very good turnout, thanks to the staff for putting that together and supplying the little snacks and the awards for everyone. Was at the department head meeting. We talked about a couple of things this morning with the security policy update that Kerry brought forward. Had planning and zoning at Wednesday night. Not a whole lot going on. There was two or three things on the item, all non-eventful, nobody even testified. So they'll be coming forward in the next week or so. Had my legislative conference call with the SECB. Not a whole lot going on there. They're getting spooled up for the upcoming legislative session. Having a big problem trying to keep our committee assignments and the attendance up and some vacancies inside of that. So we're working on trying to get everybody back involved with that. And then I made it to the SWCD meeting, and business as usual there. They're wrapping up some projects for the summer, and things are doing well there. Gave them a report on the dam and the bridge and some other things going on in the county. And that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mark, please.
Okay. And after our board meeting on 27th, today, the employee appreciation, like I keep it brought up, and the Highland Park was out of order when or don't go on the order with the 19th. So they had theirs on the, was it the 27th here or whatever? And it was at Highland Park and the 28th. And then we had the our flood resources session. And then on the September 4th, they have a department heads meeting. That pretty much includes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Andy, please.
Mine's really brief. The employee appreciation was attended by all and department head on the 4th, and that ends my reporting.
Yes.
Well, the employee appreciation event, on Tuesday, the 3rd, I had an ACO membership committee Zoom, department head meeting. On Wednesday, on Thursday, the 5th, I had a Transportation Alliance Legislative Committee meeting, and then a towards zero death self essential steering committee meeting. And then yesterday, I had a MRCI Executive Finance Board meeting. And that's the end of mine.
Thank you. Mine is is very similar. In addition to the PR update that was mentioned, employee appreciation and department heads, I also participated in the Monarch Butterfly with the Public Works, their open house on August 27th, and then attended the Bluewood County Breakfast on the Farm on Saturday, the 7th. And that completes my report, and that completes today's approved agenda. I will ask for a a motion to recess at 10:07.
So adjourn.
We can adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Some?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned. It's still 10:07, so we will start the work session in 10 minutes, 10:17 in the
Fireplace.
fireplace room.